It is now 6:30, and I will bring the Monday, August 24, 2015 Burnsville Planning Commission to order. Staff, thank you very much for your time this evening. Welcome, Commissioners. Thank you for your time this evening. The first item on our agenda this evening is the adoption of the agenda. I would bring it to everyone's attention, for those in the audience this evening, a copy of the agenda is provided at the table in the lobby, and for those of you that are watching from home, a copy of tonight's published agenda is available at burnsville.org. Staff, do you have any additions or changes to the published agenda?
No, we do not.
None from staff. Commissioners? None? Hearing none, I would stand for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Benke.
Second.
By Commissioner Levy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Our second item this evening is approval of the minutes from the August 10, 2015 meeting. Staff, are there any changes to the agenda that we were provided?
No, there are no changes.
No changes from staff. Commissioners, changes from the agenda from the August 10 meeting?
Yes.
Nothing?
No.
Okay. Hearing none, I would stand for a motion.
No movement, Chair.
Moved by Commissioner Singh. Second by Commissioner Workman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. I would like to spend just a quick moment reviewing, we've got three applications this evening, that's kind of a new process for us. We are going to be reopening the public hearing. We had a slight IT change in the system where we notified homeowners at the end of our last meeting, we had a homeowner notify us that they did not receive a notification. Through further research, we realized there was a glitch in how the homeowners were notified. The notifications did not actually, by state statute, nullify the decisions, but Burnsville does pride itself on having open public hearings, and so the City Council has pushed these three hearings back to us. We're going to go through all three of them, one by one, open the public hearing, take any testimony from any neighbors, and then move on the motion. So, that's kind of a unique thing for us. We haven't done this before. The third item this evening is a public hearing. It is Heritage Bank NA application for a PUD amendment to allow a technology manufacturing use at 13795 Frontier Court, and presenting this evening is one of our city planners, Ms. Garros.
Thank you, Members of the Commission.
Garros, thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. I'd like to address, for the planning commissioners and the audience, that we did have one of the residents submit a list of questions related to this particular application, so what I'm going to do is briefly go over the application and try to address, to the extent that I can, these questions, and then be open for questions and open for the public The subject site is located on the corner of McAndrews Road and Frontier Court. This building is part of a planned unit development. The building was approved, I believe, in 1981. What the applicant wants to do is, this building has been vacant, and the applicant has a business that they would like to operate in this facility. They have an existing business in Apple Valley, have been there for a number of years, and are looking for a larger site to move to so that they can expand. They're anticipating expanding from their current 25 employees to, at some point in time in the future, up to 40 to 45 employees. This particular business is, as I said, in a planned unit development. What that means is that the property has received approval in the past for the site to be developed as it is, and the plans, the specific plans for the project, become part of the planned unit development approval. So, in addition to the site plan for the building, any other types of issues related to parking, or shared parking, building design, et cetera, are part of that planned unit development agreement from some number of years ago. This is an application to amend that planned unit development, and the only difference being is that they would like to pursue their business, which does include some light manufacturing type uses, and that use is not generally allowed in a straight B3 general business zoning district, which the underlying zoning of this is B3. But with the PUD, the Planning Commission and Council have the opportunity to take a look at the specific use and see if it's something that you feel could be appropriate for the particular site, and you can take a look at any impacts to adjacent properties or other sites, and consider all of those things as part of the planned unit development agreement. For lack of a better term, a planned unit development is a type of negotiated zoning district, if you will. It is something that's identified through ordinance. It is something where the plans actually become part of the planned unit development, and the only way to modify the planned unit development, other than making a up to 10% addition to a building footprint, would be to come in, have a public hearing before the planning commission, and then the planning commission makes recommendation to City Council. The City Council is the actual decision authority to approve or deny planned unit developments. With that, this is a technology-based business. What they do is they design, manufacture, and test interfaces for semiconductor industry. They have indicated that they're typical, they are a clean type of manufacturer. This will include some manufacturing and some assembly. It's manufacturing of very small technologically advanced components, if you will. They had indicated at the last public hearing that some of the items that they are working with are less than hairs width, so they're like, working with, I'm not going to say, well, transistors, just as an example, but component parts that they manufacture. They make them for specific clients, so this is not something where they are making large quantities of a certain type of product. They make them specifically for another business that needs to use a component part. They do not typically have people coming to this site to purchase their components. Usually, they are shipped out, and they say that they usually will have shipping of boxes that are approximately one foot by one foot, so smaller than a paper box, for example. The site is on a corner lot. The adjacent uses are all commercial type uses. This manufacturing type of business will have less people coming to the site and leaving the site than the adjacent uses, such as the car wash and the copy center. As I said, they have had 25 employees. The parking on-site is sufficient for the number of employees. There is no outdoor activity or outdoor storage proposed as part of this application. They do not need that. The manufacturing, if you will, in the light assembly takes place totally inside the building, and they are looking to modify the interior of the building, basically the area where the garage currently exists, to modify that so that they have an area for their compressor units to be inside, and also an area where they can have a dust-free environment for part of their assembly. They're proposing, on the building, to remove three of the overhead doors that exist on the building, and to replace those with metal insulated panels. The current garage space is not climate-controlled, and they do need that, so that is why they're replacing some of those panels. They anticipate that they would have perhaps one truck coming to the site on a weekly basis for different supplies, maybe even less than that. So although the site can accommodate up to five vehicles coming and going and loading at that location, and this site will be very minimal, again, one possibly per day or week is something that is typical of their current operation. The parking is sufficient. They have 25 employees. There are currently 26 parking spaces associated with the project. This will be sufficient for their current employees and also for the additional employees. The number of parking stalls meets the city's ordinance, and in addition to that, they are not proposing any other changes that you would outwardly see, other than putting a small, about 20 square foot, I believe, sign on the side of the building, but other than that, you will not notice any particulars in terms of this site, much above what would currently have been there as an office space when it was occupied a year or so ago. In terms of the questions that were submitted, what is the current zoning? It is B3 general business planned unit development. That is the proposed zoning. The change is to change from a purely office use to allow the light manufacturing type use. I believe that I have described what that use is. The applicant is here and can describe that further if there are further questions. The type of business permitted under the zoning is exactly what is proposed. In order to change that to some other type of business, we'd have to go through another public hearing, just like this, and City Council review. So, the use is relatively limited to the use that's proposed as the application information has come in and the plans that have been submitted. Future development, I'm just trying to... Definition between light manufacturing and heavy manufacturing. Heavy manufacturing would be similar to the area of the city north of Highway 13 and adjacent to the city of Savage. Northwest part of the city are gateway industrial heavy zoning. That has, where you have very large equipment, assembly, usually outdoor storage associated with it, machining, parts, those types of things are typically considered to be a heavy manufacturing, whereas this is more of an assembly, but it is still manufacturing because they are creating a product. So that is why we have identified this as being a light manufacturing type use. This is a similar type of use than Caliber Edition was, located in the old Best Buy building. That probably had heavier usage because they were creating various items for boats and trailers and those types of things, little larger type operation and type of product than what is manufactured here, but this is a very similar type of PUD application. I would have to have the applicant address information related to hours of operation and the office to manufacturing square footage. As I indicated, there is a modification that's proposed within this part of the building, primarily, but they are proposing to do some floor plan modifications inside the building, which is primarily office at this point. The deliveries and pickups, you have this area for deliveries, which is the same as it's always been, the front of the building. As I said, the employees can access that. This is not a type of business where you have the general public coming here to purchase things, so it's an entry door, just like any other entry. I've indicated what the signage will be. There is not a requirement or a limitation for lighting in this zoning district. The B2 neighborhood business and B1 office business districts do have a limitation of lighting needing to be shut off by, I believe, 11 o'clock at night. There is not a requirement that I am familiar with on this particular property. The applicant can indicate if they plan on keeping their lights on past hours of operation or not. There are no issues in terms of traffic patterns. This is a very, it's a very light use for this operation, very much less intensive than the adjacent uses. The city engineer has no issues with regard to traffic patterns, parking, et cetera. With that, the applicant is here, and the recommendation from staff is to recommend approval of the planned unit development, as they have made application, subject to one condition, and that's that the applicant provide the color or sample of the proposed metal material that will be used on the infill panels for those three overhead doors that they plan on replacing. With that, I can stand for questions.
Commissioners, any additional questions of Ms. Garros this evening?
I have a quick question.
Commissioner Workman.
What is the current lighting situation on the property as it is right now? Do we know anything about that?
No, I do not. I would have to look into that. As I said, there is not anything associated under the B3 zone. If that's something that is an issue, or that the planning commission feels is an issue, you can certainly recommend that. That is something that can be done as part of a planned unit development approval.
Thank you.
Sure. Ms. Garros? City of Burnsville has a standard of cutoff lighting. Basically, we control light in most situations very well up to the property lines.
Yes.
There's been no comment on this lot is not complying with that standard?
This lot is compliant with the standard, with the lighting that's proposed. You can see that the existing features are cutoff features.
Right.
The only other lighting that is proposed would be with, not even actually with the sign, the sign is not proposed to be lighted, so...
Okay, thank you.
It's what's existing on-site.
Commissioners, any other questions? Ms. Garros, I think in light of this evening's process, I think probably the right thing to do is to open the public hearing. We can allow people in the audience to come and ask questions. We can record those questions, and at that point, then we could ask the applicant to come up and answer those questions.
Certainly, thank you.
At this point, this is a public hearing, and I'm going to reopen the public hearing from the August 10 meeting, and at this point, I would like to invite people from the audience to come up, and please give us your name and your address for the record, and present us with some questions.
Good evening, Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Jim Giebel. I live at 1701 Victoria Lane, which is directly across from the property. Zoning-wise, I guess I still don't have a good feel, and I know you guys are familiar with this and the terminology, because you deal with it every day. I guess as residents, we don't. So it sounds like current zoning is B3?
B3 and planned unit development.
Okay. And the types of business permitted there under the current zoning, this business does not fit that category at this point?
Correct, because of the light manufacturing component.
Okay. So, the new proposed zoning, or PUD, is what?
The planned unit development will be what the applicant's Celadon's business is, which is basically the construction of these conductors and the assembly. It will also, they have some office, and the site plan, if you will, would allow them to change three of the exterior doors on the side of the building to use a metal panelized system in its place. So that is what would be allowed there. That's the only use that would be allowed there. If somebody wanted to come back in and, say, do total office, or something of that sort in the future, they would have to come in, go through a public hearing, and ask to amend the planned unit development to allow any other type of use.
Okay. So, basically, it can be used for light manufacturing at this point?
For what the applicant has proposed. Their entire application is basically part of the planned unit development, so yeah, if there was another business that came in that operated with the same type of semiconductors and produced the same type of thing, that could run with the land, and they could do that. Otherwise, anything different would require them to come in and amend the planned unit development, and that would be a public hearing to do that.
And I think it's, you know, I mean, I want to state that we aren't against business, you know, we're pro-growth and pro-employment and that sort. We want to make sure, I guess, that we get it right the first time. The neighbor's a little bit protective of that neighborhood because it was destined to be a mixed stock back in 2000, and it's not, happily, and we're glad to see, you know, the type of business over there, so I don't want you to take it the wrong way. You kind of get one chance at this through Planning Commission and City Council with those questions, so... So, if somebody came in, it's going to make yarn, light manufacturing, they can do that, or is that going to be a PUD hearing?
That would be a PUD amendment.
Because it would have to be exactly what Celadon is making with their...
Substantially, yep, substantially consistent with that, correct.
Yeah, it just seems a little nebulous, I guess, of light manufacturing and, you know, what can go in there, what can't go in there, you know, if a foundry is going to go in there, I know that's heavy duty, but, like I say, I guess we're a little bit skittish with that. So, hours of operation, you know, looking at the background material, I don't know if it said that, or if your Apple Valley location has that information or not, but that would be a question, I guess, if it's Monday through Friday, or weekends involved. B, I guess interested in knowing, and I don't know if you have the layout of the floor plan of the facility at this point, but, you know, we're on the south side of the facility, basically. The background material talks about a west entrance and west doors, and I don't know which direction that is, I guess, is related to that building. I mean, I look at the garage doors here as being east.
Correct.
And so, west side, there is not...
It's adjacent to Frontier Court.
And there are no doors there, at this point?
Nothing will be added or modified on that side.
But the background material talks about deliveries at the west door, a sign at the west door, so I don't know...
It should be at the east.
So, in the material, it does say that, so that's, I just want to, is it north side or south side, I guess, is basically how the building is laid out.
I'll let the applicant can address that.
Actually, we'll just get the list of questions, and I'll have you come up at one time. Thank you.
So, you know, that's going to be a question. Obviously, we'd want to try to get things to the north side, towards the city of Burnsville Maintenance Garage, more that way, away from the properties, you know, if that fits. I know that's office space now, and I don't know what your plans are for redevelopment of the interior with that. The background material talked about machinery, bulk packaging being delivered. Don't know what that is, how often that occurs, maybe a clarification there with that. Signage, I know it sounds like you're bringing one over from Apple Valley, maybe, it's going to be lit. Again, maybe we're spoiled. We knew the previous owners, the resident lived in the neighborhood, you know, they kind of catered to us maybe a little bit, because they turned off the lights, signage at night, they turned off parking lot lights at night. Kevin Hoffman, the most recent tenant on the north end, you know, we talked two or three times a year when things went haywire with the lighting controls, which they always did, to have them, you know, go off at dark, or, you know, whatever the code, I know there's some time span in there because of Valley Food Co-op. The lighting is intense, even though they're cut off supposedly. I've seen better types of cutoff lights. It lights up Frontier Lane. We walk our dog at night, and it's light, it's bright. So that is a concern from that of it. Dumpster location, trash pickup, again, I didn't see anything with that. If you're using the garage doors, which garage doors, again, if we can go more to the north, get that stuff away from the street side, that would be appreciated. And traffic, I think traffic is an issue, if you live there. I don't know if the car wash gets 25 cars a day, or 30 cars a day, you know, times seven, that's 210. It's been for sale for two years because there is no business in that car wash. We use Cornerstone for various things, and it's quiet. I don't know if 20 cars come in there a day.
The area is designed to accommodate commercial traffic. It is a B3 zone, and my comments were that what is proposed is not going to cause a situation where any different traffic modifications need to be. It wasn't to the point to which the city engineer felt that there needed to be a traffic analysis done.
Yeah, and I can understand the traffic analysis not being needed, but, like, coming here tonight to get out, to make a left turn out of Frontier Lane, going northbound on County Road 11, or west up the hill, it's hard, it's difficult. So I guess one thing I would like to maybe see considered is no left turn, at a time period of like, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., because it's a bad, it's an intersection, from that standpoint, you know, at 4:30, 5:00 o'clock, we have 25, 30, 35 employees all leaving, you know, it's going to be jammed up there, and it's a critical time, you know, everybody's coming home from work, and... So, those are my main, I guess, concerns, questions, issues, whatever you want to call them. You know, the zoning part of things, if we keep it light, I guess, and I'd like to be able to define it somehow, you know, so it stays that way with it. So, that's all I'll say for now, I think. I'll let a couple of the other residents come up and speak.
Please step up to the podium and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Council.
Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you very much for holding this hearing. Really appreciate the opportunity to ask the questions. My name is Diana Mauer. I live at 13800 Frontier Lane, and we're across the street from Jim and Diane, and we are kitty-corner from this property. And if this is servicing semiconductor industry, my expectation, being that I also am involved in that industry from time to time in my past, that this would be a controlled access type of environment, and would have to be kept clean, would have to be kept, pretty strict controls on that, that would probably require a continuous use of equipment, even if the business is not being operated at that time, and that's generating a lot of, you know, compressors or equipment that's going to run 24/7, whether the business is closed or not, or open, that may not be quiet then. And I can tell you that Valley Natural Foods compressor goes on at 3:00 in the morning, because I know it, and I'm way down the street from it. So if this is going to add, you know, round-the-clock humming of additional equipment, that's another concern that I would have.
The compressors are proposed to be inside the building, not outside the building for this application.
Okay, but that, I don't understand what that means as far as noise.
They're going to be inside the building, so that there should not be...
Be able to hear them at all?
You should not have noise. The limitation we have is based on Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, which is 65 decibels, and the applicant can address how loud their equipment is.
Okay, okay. Because usually with that equipment as well, in clean room environment, has to be invented to the outside. You don't get to, you know, recycle it, so there would have to be some sort of exchange to the outside anyway, so there would still be something I'd like to have investigated and understood. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Fred Gross. I live at 13804 Frontier Lane, across the street. I would like to know if the company is purchasing the building... I would like to know if the company is purchasing the building or if the bank is going to continue to own the building, and if this is a good foray into manufacturing and whether we should do it or not. When McDonald's and Holiday wanted to come in here, we all, some of us spent some consequential money to keep them out. And then I sat on a commission or a committee to try to come up with what would go here. And what you're proposing here is not what we decided would go here. It might not be a bad application, but it is manufacturing, and I would be concerned that it would be an introduction into manufacturing that could be, you know, it could have a creep into a little bit heavier and heavier and heavier manufacturing. So I'd be concerned with that. I'd also be concerned with where the compressor is located, if it is exhausted outside, and if it's on the north side of the building or south side of the building. I would, if it's going to be here and this business is going to be here, I would prefer to see it on the north side and not exhausted externally. And I would like to address whether the bank is going to be the landlord and the company be a tenant, meaning if they grow successfully in another year, are they going to be moving to Savage? And then we're going to be here again, looking at a light manufacturer which is heavier than this light. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that would like to step up and give us your thoughts? Hearing none, I can close the public hearing?
May we?
Okay, have the applicant, okay. And then we will kind of work our way through. So could I have the applicant come up and get, once again, give us your name and information for the record?
My name is Brian Root, and I live at 13655 Duluth Drive in Apple Valley, Minnesota.
My name is Bill Funk. I live at 23690 Jersey Court in Lakeville.
Celadon is owned by myself and my wife. My wife is sitting right there, and Bill has been at Celadon since we literally started the company in the basement of the house.
Thank you for your, thank you for your time this evening. So I'm going to try to kind of work through some of the questions, and then we'll try to do this as organized as I can. Just real quickly, hours of operation for the business?
Our assembly people normally show up between, right around 6:15 in the morning, and we're pretty early crews. So we all, almost everybody's there by 8:00 in the morning. We do have a couple of people that come in later and stay later, and they usually head home about 5:30, 6:00 o'clock. So it's pretty quiet from about 6:00 o'clock on.
I did find in the background the reference to the west entrance, and that was, I think, to be maybe a typo, it was in, under the section on signage, said the applicant plans to simply relocate the business existing wall signage to the west entrance of the building, and I would agree with the resident that that's actually the southern entrance of the building.
Not so.
No?
Is, according to the map?
There is, currently...
It'd be the one facing McAndrews.
No, sign's not going there.
Sign's not going there.
Sign's not going there. It's going on the west side, facing...
Western or the north side.
Either going to be on the west side or the north side.
Okay, and that would be the signage?
Yes.
And I think the question then was based on deliveries, and the deliveries would be coming and going from which door?
That's typically FedEx, UPS, dropping off stuff in the morning, and then about 4:00 in the afternoon, picking something up. So that's typically what you see is the FedEx or UPS person coming by. Right now, they drop it off at our front desk and put it on our front desk. I mean, that's, those are the typical boxes that get dropped off. So it probably will be dropped off on the north side, possibly on the west side by where these panels are. You can see an access door between them, and that's probably where they, where they'll get dropped off, either the north side or the west side. So you probably won't even see them.
Those garage doors are on the east side.
I'm sorry, east side.
East side of the building, between that and Cornerstone.
Right hand, sorry.
If we get a big thing, a bubble wrap or something, it's going to come in the back. If it's a little box like this, they might drop it in the front.
Okay.
So either way, it's going to be the north or the east side. The traffic on the north side is not very good because the people are coming and going from the grocery store. So the east side's really the most practical place for them to leave their truck sit for five minutes.
Okay.
And something else I'd like to point out is really we're making the company so that the front door is the north side, and the south side that faces you is actually going to be kind of a, an area where people can sit and work on their laptops, where people can, we'll have, probably have a couple of chairs there where people can just sit and talk. We have one employee that wants to have a ping pong table, but we're not going to, we're not, probably not going to do that, but that's, it's going to be pretty quiet actually on the south side. The main entrance will be on the north side.
I think there was a question based around the dumpster, and I'm sorry, I don't remember, it's been two meetings ago when I drove by. Is there...
We're not going to do a dumpster?
It's going to be inside.
It's going to be inside, just like it is right now. We don't create a whole lot of waste.
Okay. So then to the question about traffic, you believe the majority would be coming and going from the northern edge of the building, kind of facing the city garage?
Thinking that most of the employees will probably come in on the west side entrance because that's where most of the parking places are, and they'll come in there and then, and then leave there. Like I said, the main entrance will be on the north side, so there'll be some people that park on the north side. I don't think anybody's going to park on the south side. It's just not a, not a practical area to park.
I'd kind of like to move on to, let's talk a little bit about the equipment. I think in the previous hearing, I did ask some questions about the equipment, that part of your reasoning for filling in some of the garage doors on the east side of the building was that your equipment was going to be inside, and I did ask if there was any dust collection or any equipment mounted on the exterior of the building. And I think if I remember correctly, you told me no, but could I, to answer some of the residents' questions, could we talk a little bit about the equipment that's going to be going in there and what, if anything, would be exposed to the outside of the building?
Nothing will be exposed outside. The dust collector's totally inside, it just recirculates inside. Again, there's very little, this is what we make, these little things. We're using tools that are just bigger than your hair, so they don't generate much dust. But we can't have any dust in this stuff because it's going into a semiconductor fab. So we collect it, we dump that thing out twice a year, maybe. We collect a little bucket twice a year and we put that in the trash. So there's very little dust. It's all recirculated within the building. It ultimately goes out through the normal ventilation and air conditioning system.
Okay. Do you believe you'll have any equipment running while the business is not in operation?
Occasionally, we'll, we have some drilling cycles that will take maybe 16 hours. So obviously, it's going to run more than one shift. So we will run that lights out, and at that point, the machine and the compressors continue running. And speaking of compressors, we have rotary screw compressors. They're not reciprocating compressors, which are quite loud. We used to have that and we said, oh, it's too loud. So we got the rotary screw compressors. You can stand in there and talk in the room that they're in on the inside. We've never, ever had any of our neighbors, we're in a building right now that's kind of a horseshoe, and we're in a corner of it, so we got neighbors on both sides. We've never had anyone say anything about the noise in our building.
When you're outside, you really can't even hear them. We can hear jazzercise next to us more. We can be in by the compressors and hear jazzercise next to us more than we can hear anything else, so.
Okay, I think to the ownership question, the application is from the bank, so I would assume that the bank is going to move forward with the ownership of the building?
No.
No, okay.
Celadon is purchasing the building.
Okay.
Or I should say, my wife and I are purchasing the building for Celadon, and we also own
Commissioners, while the applicant is up there, what questions do you have that assign with the applicant? Commissioner Benkey?
Your hours of operation seem to be indicating quite a staggered timeframe. So the assembly crew gets there at 6:15 and then they're typically gone by...
They typically leave 3:30, 4:00 in the afternoon.
Essentially, people are, you know, those 24, 25, up to 40 people are going to be leaving between 3:30, 4:00 and 5:30 in the evening.
Right.
So it's going to be pretty spread out.
It's pretty, it's pretty spread out, yes. There's no big surge of everybody heading out the door. We have kind of a flexible work environment, so people can come earlier or come in late.
Sure. And then do you have a clean room environment there that's going to, based on what one of the questions was, that, you know, controlled access, clean room, where you can't dump material back into it?
We do have a controlled environment, clean room. We call it the clean room.
Sure.
And we do have an HVAC unit that is actually going to be on the north side of the building where the current HVAC units are, okay? And air will be going into those, into that clean room, but the HEPA filters that you can hear humming when you have HEPA filter are inside the building. So if you're outside the building, you would never hear the HEPA filters at all.
And then generally...
In fact, the HEPA filters have to be quiet enough because we've got people working around the clean room.
Sure.
And so we have to keep that quiet as well.
Sure, and then, you know, looking at the building, you know, the picture of the building here, you have the area with the clear stories, the high windows.
Right.
And then you have the area to the north, which is more the box, and the area to the east, which is the garages. And, you know, can you sort of characterize how you're going to use sort of those three areas?
Well, the office area to the north is going to remain office area, and that's, that has a nice flat roof, so that's where we're actually putting the additional air conditioning unit to cool things.
Okay.
And the, where the celebratory windows are and the wide open area, that's actually, we're kind, I already started calling the clean room the fishbowl because it's going to be kind of in the middle. It's literally surrounded by office desks.
Sure.
So it's in the middle glass so that people can see into the clean room. And again, it has to be quiet because you've got engineers, you've got technicians working outside at their desks, so it's got to be quiet on the outside as well. So standing outside, you really won't hear anything at all.
And then, you know, you've characterized your pickup and deliveries as morning and evening, so, you know, it's not much different than Cornerstone from that standpoint.
Not much different from Cornerstone, no.
Thank you, Chair.
Commissioners, any other questions? Commissioner Workman?
Somebody had spoken about the signage and the potential lighting conflict with that. Can you speak to the plans for the lighting on the sign currently?
It was designed, I never installed it, but the sign was designed with basically a rope light behind it, so it silhouetted the letters from the backside.
So will that push out towards...
Like 40 watts or something, just enough so you could stand it off the building with enough light behind it.
And which side of the building is that intended on right now?
We're a little up in the air. We were going to put it on the west side over the entrance there, but then we thought if we ever did have customers, they'd probably be coming in the north end, so it's going to be the west or the north side.
So as long as it's not on the south side facing the neighborhood, would...
We have no intention of putting it on the south side at all.
That won't change at all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? Okay.
Did we address...
Thank you very much.
We address all the questions?
Okay. Ma'am, if you, if, could I just have you step up and, it's kind of difficult for the people at home to hear you in the audience.
And thank you for answering those questions. I appreciate the information. So again, having the background in manufacturing, the next move then, as you grow and succeed, and we have every hope that you will in your, in your business, would be to add additional shifts. So as you, so what is the process with the zoning as those then, you know, we're talking today with manufacturing, it is now on, I'm assuming, one shift?
One shift, yeah.
One shift. So then, you know, you're not going to move to another building when you have unused capacity on other shifts? And so today we're talking, you know, an eight-hour, 10-hour shift perhaps, I don't know if you do five eights or four tens, and then...
Four nines and a four.
Okay, and then weekend work overtime as well?
Yes.
So that would be first Saturday, then Sunday?
Almost never.
Okay.
Almost never.
But again, as capacity, as you grow, those are the, those are the things that happen. Our capacity on weekends and capacity on additional shifts, and all of a sudden we have a different situation. So again, I do wish you all most success, but I want to also make sure that we're having an environment that we're...
Absolutely. Absolutely. We want to be good neighbors too.
Yeah.
Absolutely. We want to be good neighbors. To answer that, right now, we don't have a second shift contemplated. Every once in a while, when we have something really busy, we might have a few people on on the weekend doing some work, but it's less impact than what you'd have during the week because Cornerstone's closed, you still have people coming in and out of, out of the Valley Natural Foods. I don't know that you'd notice any difference. If we, if we were to add a later shift, yes, there might be some people coming in and going later. Again, it's probably about the same as what Valley Natural Foods has, you know, I think you go to 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock at night, so might be something, something like that, a few people. But we don't have a second shift. We never, ever, and Celadon is 18 years old, we've never run a second shift. So it's not contemplated right now.
Thank you very much. Commissioner, I, I mean, we may have a couple just more questions. So Commissioner Benkey?
Can you characterize at your current location, how often you've run long? Where you've had to run into the weekend, when you've had to maybe run a late shift? How many times in last year, how many times in the last two years?
Gosh, what?
Three or four weekends in a year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and again, it's not 20 people in there, it's four or five people in there.
Commissioners, any other questions? Okay.
Well, there was a question on the lighting, the exterior lighting. I don't know what the lights do now. The lights where we are run 24 hours a day, but of course, again, we want to be good neighbors, and, you know, whatever, whatever works well, I mean, if, you know, we, like I say, we want to be good neighbors.
Okay. Mr. Benkey, I have another question.
Just from Garrus. Deb, do we know if the PUD controls the lights or if it's by individual buildings?
I don't know.
Sure.
I don't know what that is.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Commissioner Levy, you do have one more question? Yeah. So exterior security is not so much an issue for you, so the lights could be turned out, turned off at night if that were...
We will, we will have a full-blown security system in the, in the building. We would probably like to have some perimeter lighting, just so that the police can see it, like, you know, where the vestibules are, have lighting on all the time in the vestibules, so that the police like to see that when they drive by. So we'd probably have that lighting on all the time, 24 hours a day.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay. Do I have anyone else in the audience that would like to step up and give us your thoughts? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and Commissioners, your discussion. Not everybody talk at once.
I'm known to be the speaker here, Chair.
Commissioner Benkey, you have the floor.
Yeah, thank you. I guess I'm, the issue of light industrial to me is satisfied by the fact of the PUD. Basically, the project is limited to exactly what this company produces right now, and the only alternate would be another company that produced exactly the same product in exact, essentially the same way. I don't see the pickup and pickups and deliveries as a major difference from what the other buildings in the PUD do, and quite honestly, I feel like the traffic, I mean, I believe there's a semaphore at the corner of Frontier and McAndrews. I don't really see the traffic as even coming anywhere near what this area is designed for currently. I don't see anything here that really changes my opinion of the project.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Benkey. Commissioner Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I think the applicant has answered questions that, I had some questions after reviewing our meeting on August 8th and looking at the background information again. again. And, uh, three of the questions I had were covered by the list of questions that were submitted, and was covered by Ms. Garrus. So I, I feel that the applicant has answered all the questions. The building has been vacant for quite a while. I drive there almost every day, and I look at it, and I think, um, the, the, the light manufacturing is very, seeing the, what they're going to be constructing, it's, it's very, very light indeed. And I understand and I appreciate the concern of the neighbors, they want to maintain, I think that if I am right, they're doing it with good intentions, to keep the neighborhood quiet, and so that their, their property values can, and not only remain, but can appreciate, and they want a good neighborhood. And so, I, hopefully that the applicant has answered all the questions, and I have no concern anymore, and I would be supporting the application.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Any other comments? Okay.
I, I would concur. Um, I, I try to look at these things as if, you know, I'm the neighbor across the street, because I'm a Burnsville resident, and, um, I do believe there's probably some uses that would have fit in here that wouldn't have required, um, an amendment that probably could have caused more traffic. And I'm excited that the, the applicant is bringing jobs to the city. I do, I did in the beginning ask a lot of questions about the external equipment and noise, I was very concerned about that, and I, I feel confident that, um, that information has been answered. So I also would be in support of this motion. So if, unless there's any other comments, Commissioners, I would stand for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move, uh, to affirm the motion and the recommendation made of the August eighth, two thousand and fifteen Regular Planning Commission meeting, to recommend to the City Council approval of the PUD amendment, subject to the one condition, which reads, prior to release of any building permit, the applicant shall provide the color of the proposed garage style infill panels for staff review and approval. This will ensure compatibility with the subject site and surrounding buildings.
Thank you. Move by Commissioner Singh. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benkey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Uh, this application will go in front of the City Council on Tuesday, September eighth. Good luck. And thank you very much, I appreciate, uh, all of the interest from the neighborhood. I think that makes a better process, and I thank everyone's time this evening, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda this evening is also a public hearing. The public hearing is for K Two Real Estate LLC application for a planned unit development amendment to allow Northern Tool and Equipment to have a per, um, a permanent exterior display area at one-two-two-zero-five River Ridge Boulevard. Um, reviewing the application this evening, once again, is our city planner, Ms. Garrus. Thank you, Deb.
For this application, uh, it is a planned unit development amendment, very similar to the last application that we received. Uh, the exception being that, uh, this is for an existing use at Northern Tool and Equipment on the south side of the building. They have a, an exterior display area of seven thousand five hundred square feet. Uh, when this was approved, uh, in the initial PUD, uh, there was a requirement at that time that the maximum size display area is six hundred square feet, and there was a condition added in the PUD that by October, I believe October of this year, uh, that the exterior display area be reduced to six hundred square feet. As we'd indicated, uh, at the last meeting during the public hearing is, since that time, the city has on its own initiative rezoned the site and changed the zoning ordinance, so there is no longer a requirement for, um, a minimum or maximum display area. The applicant is requesting the PUD to be amended to remove condition number eight, which, uh, requires them to modify this and, uh, decrease the size of the, um, exterior display area. With that, the recommendation, uh, is to approve the planned unit development, um, subject to one condition, and that's that all of the other, uh, previously approved PUD, um, conditions shall remain in force and effect. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garrus. Uh, this item, uh, is identical to the previous item, where we had, um, some misinformation, we had local, uh, homeowners that weren't not, were, were not notified, uh, new mailings went out. So at this point, I am going to reopen the public hearing, um, from the August eighth meeting, and, uh, stand for anyone in the audience to, um, give us testimony or questions in reference to the reopening of the public hearing. Anyone in the audience at this point that would like to step up, we would take your comments. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, uh, since there was no additional, um, comments, um, I would stand for, uh, an affirmation of the recommendation from the previous meeting, unless there's questions.
Also move that, that we affirm the recommendation from the August eighth, two thousand and fifteen meeting, uh, with the condition that staff has placed in for us.
Moved by Commissioner Benkey, second by Commissioner Levy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The, uh, fifth item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing for a Douglas L. Larson application for a conditional use permit to allow a detached accessory building to exceed five hundred square feet for the property located at one-four-nine-zero-four View Crest Lane. Uh, this once again is an application where we are going to be reopening the public hearing, uh, after, uh, new notifications went out. Uh, Ms. Garrus is going to quickly review the application, and we will reopen the public hearing.
Thank you, uh, members of the commission. Is just a summary of this, the applicant has got a large, uh, lot, is owned our one single family. He is requesting to put up an exterior, or excuse me, an accessory building on the property that exceeds five hundred square feet. Five hundred square feet is the maximum size, uh, of an accessory structure that, uh, you can have if you have less than two acres, uh, and are in the R-one zoning district. We have reviewed the application, uh, against the site and other adjoining parcels and properties in the neighborhood. This is a neighborhood of very large lots. Uh, there are similar sized buildings and even larger, um, buildings. This site will be screened, um, from all the adjacent properties and will not be visible from the public street, and staff is recommending approval, uh, of the conditional use permit, uh, for this particular site, subject to one condition, and that be that no business can be conducted from the detached accessory building. And with that, uh, the applicant is here and can address...
Thank you, Ms. Garrus. Uh, at this point, um, I would like to reopen the public hearing and stand, and have anyone in the audience come up and give us your thoughts in reference to this applicant. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, and, uh, Commissioners, your pleasure.
I would make the motion that we affirm the recommendation of the August eighth, two thousand and fifteen meeting, again, with the, uh, condition, uh, placed on this approval by, uh, staff.
Moved by Commissioner Benkey.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Singh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Mr. Lawson, thank you very much for attending your second meeting this evening, we appreciate your time. Uh, this will go in front of the City Council on September eighth. Um, and I think, uh, as stated before, I think there's a plan to pull it from the consent agenda to give you the chance to ask about the fees.
Yes.
Okay? And once again, thank you very much for attending the second meeting, we appreciate your time. That gets us to item number six on our agenda this evening. This is a public hearing for the City of Burnsville, Ordinance Amendments to Title Ten, which is zoning, chapters five, seven, thirty, and thirty A of the Burnsville City Code regarding payment of city fees, non-conforming uses, fences, exterior building materials, landscape securities, plant diversity, and special event signage. And once again, shockingly enough, Ms. Garrus is in charge. Ms. Garrus, you have the floor.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, the application this evening is really taking a look at, um, minor updates and changes to the zoning ordinance. It does require a public hearing to modify anything in the zoning ordinance. Um, the ordinance is a part of the overall city code, it's Title Ten. And every, uh, periodically, staff does come in and recommend what we refer to as housekeeping type changes. Uh, they're items that really are not controversial, uh, items that, uh, do not require, you know, in-depth study, et cetera. The majority of what is recommended this evening, uh, is being proposed because of updates to the building code. So we want to make sure that the zoning ordinance is consistent with the building code. Additionally, we have had, um, a rental licensing program that, uh, was started about three years ago, and in their efforts to, um, look at rental licensing and also, uh, active property maintenance inspections, uh, there are some items that have, uh, that they have found, other staff have found, uh, that have been issues in terms of our existing ordinance, uh, so they have recommended some language changes to help, uh, clarify, uh, provisions for, uh, the enforcement staff and the public, and then also to, um, help to make the provisions more, uh, enforceable. So what we have, uh, I just have the red line changes, uh, that are in front of you. What we try to do is to summarize these and, uh, identify on the summary sheet what, uh, particular changes are requested. In this first one, we have got the certification of taxes paid. We had required, um, this came into effect a, a number of years ago, that you need to, when you make an application, uh, for a land use clearance, you need to identify that you've paid your taxes, they're up to date. Uh, and then, in addition to that, um, we want to add that, um, there are additional, you know, they're stipulating that they do not have unpaid, uh, inspection fees, those are related to building, uh, type inspections. No unpaid rental license fees, uh, and, uh, no unpaid reinspection fees. So this first amendment is really just, uh, making some clarification to those, uh, elements, um, and that is what is proposed under that section. And this would apply to anybody making an application for a land use clearance, which is most of the applications that come before this body. Under non-conformities, there is a provision in there that, um, it's item G, and when you read it in, uh, context of the other items for non-conformities, it's kind of unclear as to what the intent is. And what we wanted to do is to modify the language so that, basically, if you have a non-conforming structure, and it burns down, um, it used to be that you, um, would need to rebuild that and meet all of the current regulations, uh, at the time that you rebuilt. That was changed some number of years ago, the statutes were changed, and basically, as long as someone makes application within six months or a hundred and eighty days of when the, uh, structure's destroyed, they can rebuild exactly what they had there before. Uh, no, they don't need any variances, anything of that sort. What they're, what this provision relates to is when you do want to make improvements to a non-conforming structure, that's fine, uh, still allowed, but we wanted to make sure that the new improvement, whatever you're adding on or changing, that that element meets, uh, the ordinance standards, the setbacks, et cetera. Uh, you can rebuild the non-conforming, if you're adding on, um, that's something that's new, and we just want to make sure and clarify that whatever is new, um, does need to meet the ordinance. So that is what that provision is. Under accessory buildings and structures, this is a change in the building code. Uh, the code changed, uh, basically so that, um, if you have, uh, accessory structure that's proposed that is over two hundred square feet, you need a building permit. Uh, if it's below that, um, it's not addressed by the building code, so you need a zoning permit. So we're just merely changing it from a hundred and twenty square feet to two hundred square feet because of the change in the, uh, building code. Under the general parking and access requirements, um, this is something that has been a practice, and it is part of our standard development contract language and our PUD amendment, um, legal documents that you have, um, you need to provide guarantees for, um, or securities for bituminous paving, et cetera. What it did not address is if you have another type of application, like a conditional use permit, um, for a restaurant or something of that sort, they still have the same type of improvements, but because you don't have a development contract or a PUD contract, we didn't have anything in writing allowing us to, um, require securities to make sure that, uh, the parking lot improvements, um, were installed. An additional item that we've run into, uh, basically with the new subdivisions, Forest Park Heights, it's a nineteen lot subdivision that is pretty much built out now, um, but we have had difficulty over the years, um, making sure that the, uh, driveways get installed. So what we did is added, um, this language to cover all sorts of applications, and it basically gives us the ability to require, um, a security be posted at the time of building permit for, um, if you're installing curb gutter, um, parking lots and driveways.
Ms. Garrus, I, uh, just to, uh, you were covering accessory buildings, and there was a couple of things in there about fencing?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, missed that. Fencing, thank you. Uh, this is also a building code change. Um, fences that are taller than seven feet require a building permit. Uh, it used to be six feet, so we are changing, uh, that to, um, reflect the, um, building code. In addition to that, we have, um, a fence standard, and we're really just changing the reference to that, um, instead of saying three and a half feet to forty-two inches. Um, we have had situations where, um, people sometimes are confused by the three and a half feet. Uh, they think it's three feet, five inches, you know, three point five feet, but it's three feet, six inches. So we just thought forty-two inches, that's how it's referenced elsewhere in the code. So that's, uh, what, why that is proposed. For special events, um, we have had since two thousand and eleven, a, um, temporary, um, or interim ordinance in effect, and this came to be, um, associated with the, um, now I can't think of it. Our September...
The fire muster.
Thank you, fire muster, that's it.
Oh.
Getting old, getting old, sorry about that. The fire muster, yeah, at one point in time, they wanted to do aerial rides, and we didn't have a provision, uh, they wanted to do helicopter rides, and we didn't have a provision in the ordinance to allow that. So this is how, uh, this particular, um, item came to be. And what, uh, we are proposing is because we've had this in effect since two thousand and eleven, and have, uh, had to go back to the council and renew, and renew, renew, that it just become a permanent change in the ordinance, um, so that for, uh, community legacy events, which are, um, things like fire muster or, you know, whole community type, uh, events, that they can have, um, they can have helicopter rides. So just, uh, making that permanent, it's been interim for, like I say, since two thousand and eleven. In the landscape standards, the landscape, um, section of the code, a couple of things, um, again, with the new subdivisions that, uh, we are, um, dealing with, we have had situations, um, where the builder comes in, uh, they post the securities, they submit a grading plan with the new home, uh, and then they close on the property, so now you have the seller, um, or the homeowner who is basing... So now you have the seller or the homeowner who is basically going to be installing the yard, and they may or may not follow what the grading plan is that's approved for the lot. And we've also had situations where the property has been closed on and the builder didn't grade the lot the way that they had proposed to grade the lot and the way that the permit was approved. So a couple of things we are getting at in the landscape ordinance. Item B is to verify that, in addition, whenever you are doing any type of grading where you disturb, disturb the ground, you have to meet, and the city is required to meet, national pollution discharge requirements. We can't allow dirt to be bare for, I believe it's more than 14 days, seven to 14 days. And so what we want to do is, this provision, item B, just to add that, in addition to these items, when homeowner or builder needs to install their yard, that also cross-references the erosion control requirements, because those are new, new standards that the city has been required to update in our own, in our own applications. And it also does apply, so we just want to make that clear for everyone, that erosion control, that's a, that's a big thing. It's probably the most important element of what we do in, in development, making sure that that is taken care of. So we have proposed a modification for that. Item J for the plant diversity. A number of years ago, the city council had identified that they did not want to see, or they thought that there was too many plantings of, at the time, there were junipers. And some of the council members didn't like junipers. They wanted to make sure that we had diverse plantings that took a look at different types of plant materials, you know, throughout the seasons. So they came up with this standard that you have to have, and Chris and I actually count these in landscape, you know, plans, that you don't have more than 25% of any one type of plant or tree. So we do that. Well, that's fine, except for the situation where someone wants to do screening and where we've actually required screening. If you use plant materials, usually we screen them with, like, arperida, some type of evergreen, black hill spruce, et cetera. And basically, you can't do that if you can only have 25% of the same species. So we wanted to add that this particular diversity, plant diversity provision, it doesn't apply to things like sod or grass seed. It doesn't apply to turf grass and hedges. So if someone wants to have a hedge, if they want to have a lilac hedge, a rose hedge, whatever, you can do that. And also, wetlands and lake buffers, we wanted to identify, those actually are subject to other standards elsewhere in the code. So we just wanted to modify this provision accordingly. We do have another provision that talks about screening along parking lots, and that does have the exception for that type of screening, but it wasn't included here generally. So we just wanted to make sure that that was covered, and that's what's proposed. Under guarantees and securities, again, this is related to landscaping. Really, all we're doing is moving this from another section to put all of the guarantees and securities under one part of the landscape ordinance. And the only change to this is that we're proposing that, instead of specifying the dollar amount that it's set by city policy, so that if the dollar amount changes for some reason, we don't have to come through, hold a public hearing, publish, you know, those types of things, if that amount should change. So we're trying to catch all of those in the city code. This section, the area in red, is exactly what I was just referring to. We're just moving it out of the single-family requirements to the general landscape security section. Under the required landscaping, this is where we get into some of the building code. Whoops, that changes. And what is, as I indicated, having more single-family lots in both the Forest Park Heights and the Rose Bluff neighborhoods, we have experienced some situations related to, you know, when you have to have the yard installed, when a temporary occupancy permit can be issued, when you get a permanent occupancy permit, et cetera. And what we really want to ensure is, number one, that we have erosion control in place, and we talked about that earlier. Item two is that we really do not want to be issuing temporary certificates of occupancy during the summer months. So we wanted to change that. There are some modifications, and this is consistent with the building code provisions in another area of the city code, to modify these dates so that they have to either have the yard installed, their mulch cover, et cetera, within 10 days, weather permitting, and then also indicate the dates for the issuance of occupancy permits. So if you want to apply, or if you have a situation, obviously, where you're building in the wintertime and you cannot get these in, that's a time to give a temporary occupancy permit. But then we do want to make sure that, you know, the following spring, by X date, the yard is installed. So those are the dates that are proposed. Again, item B is referencing the erosion control section of the ordinance and gives a reference to that. And then, item C and D on this, this is something that, it's not a change, it's just clarifying, because we've had people who are, especially the developers on corner lots, thinking that they only have to put in two trees. It's like, well, you have two front yards, really. So that means four trees on those. Also, if you have a double frontage lot, again, you have two front yards, so you'd actually have four trees that are required in each front, you know, for each front yard, two for each front yard, as opposed to just two. So that is what those changes are. And with that, that really summarizes the changes that we are proposing. We'd ask the planning commission, again, this would be a public hearing, and ask that you take a look at these and either recommend approval of the changes as proposed or with modifications per your discussion this evening.
Before I open the public hearing, I will turn over to Commissioners' questions. I think Commissioner Levy has a question from Ms. Garros.
Yes, under 10, 7, 26, general parking and access requirements, in that first line, you instantly, you mentioned installation of bituminous, then you say other city-approved hard surface material?
Yes.
But later on, you mentioned bituminous only. Now, upon satisfactory completion of the bituminous installation, should that also be including other hard surfaces?
Yes, we can modify that.
Okay.
It's for any, yeah, it's intended to be for any approved surface, so we can modify that.
Okay. Under landscaping, we've got a couple of maples that are very prolific, and the little maples keep growing up, and we like to keep them. Do I have to count my trees and make sure that I don't have more than 25% of my trees being maples?
No. This is for new applications as they come in, when we look at the landscape plans, et cetera. That's when we take a look at the plant diversity for something that's proposed as part of a land use application.
Basically, try not to make sure we have a city covered in ash trees and they're all going to leave at the same time.
Right.
Which monoculture.
Or...
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ben, can you have a question?
You can.
Okay.
Thank you. Back to nonconformities for a second.
Sure.
Provided the new improvements meet all other performance standards of the building code, I think the way this is written, it's not designed to imply that the building code might require, or the fire code, that it needs to meet the current codes. It's whatever, it's whatever the building code says that a renovation needs to meet.
Yes.
Okay. Then, under back to parking and the bituminous again, is there a distinction here between areas that might require a second lift of asphalt?
Could you define that?
In developments, you don't always put all the asphalt in immediately. Sometimes you put the first lift and the second lift. So is...
Just as a quick explanation, we've had an instance in front of us where we had a development that was not completed. The first lift was put in, and then they stopped. And typically, you do that so you don't destroy the final lift during construction. The damage can be done to the first lift. And so a lot of these things tie back to some things we've had.
And it's, I do it in the business side, I mean, as well. And I'm curious here, because it doesn't specify whether it be a multiple or other. It also seems to suggest that the, I think this also goes into the certificate of occupancy and the TCOs. You know, basically, how is a, how does this, how is this addressed for a multiple building where one end of the building might need to be occupied and the other end isn't done yet, and the TCOs need to be, I mean, I'm sort of jumping between the two of them because I think this stuff is all related. And then the whole thing about the second lift and how does that affect, I can understand how it is for the securities. How does it apply from the standpoint of the COs and the TCOs?
That is a good question. And actually, we can add that to this language, that it does involve the second lift as well. For some of the other commissioners that might not know, usually, the first lift will be put down and it's left, you know, for a year, and then they come in the next year and put the second lift down. And we've not addressed it, so we certainly can address that in here.
I think we should. Specifically, I mean, obviously, we're going to have redevelopment.
Yep.
And I think anytime there's any development, there's the potential to have areas that are not prepared properly. And that's another reason for the one lift, two lift. And if that second lift is waiting for the, for the site to be completed, yes, there should be a security for that, obviously. But the issue of issuing the certificate of occupancy probably shouldn't be tied as directly to that, especially with the limits that the TCO has. It's fairly narrow timeframe...
Yes.
...to get the TCO out there and turned into the certificate of occupancy.
Yep. The provisions that we have here are related to single-family and duplexes from the R1 and R2 districts for the, where we have those dates.
Oh, for the TCOs, okay.
Yep. For multifamily, there are different provisions that we're not proposing to change. And we do allow definitely those to be phased by a number of buildings, et cetera, and that, that's handled a little bit differently.
Sure. So actually, for single-family, R1, R2s, you're really only looking at a development then, or a redevelopment where they're creating more than one or two lots?
Pretty much.
Where that could happen. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Commissioner Workman.
I'm going to pop over to the certificate, certification of taxes paid, quick, and this is just a quick question. As far as the liens and judgments and debts owed, are these pertinent to just the City of Burnsville, or is this across all boards, personal judgments to the business or the individual that owns the business?
These are just City of Burnsville. We don't have any jurisdiction over those other things. We do have jurisdiction, however, over if you've got unpaid inspection fees and things. Those are approvals from the City of Burnsville. So that's where, where that comes into play.
And then, over to the landscaping, item J. I think I know who doesn't like junipers. The, is that relevant to commercial and residential? Because then I guess it, can you just explain that a little bit more to me?
Sure. This is when we get an application in a land use-type application, and this applies more to multifamily, commercial, and industrial projects is where this comes into play. And what we do is, when a landscape plan is required by the ordinance, that's where we take a look at the diversity standards.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner Workman?
Is there going to be a helicopter at the fire muster this year?
I don't think so. They only had it the one year, but we don't want to preclude them from having it.
Is the Donald coming with his helicopter?
The Donald, maybe.
Commissioner Singh.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Garros, I am interested in this plant diversity thing here. It says, "No single variety of plants shall be allowed to constitute more than 25% of the plant materials. And the complement of plants used shall provide year-round visual interest." Now, how do we determine the plants used to provide year-round interest? Whose interest?
Before that, what we take a look at is if they are plants like roses, for instance, they will hold their buds through the winter seasons. So we try to buy, there are certain types of plants that have interesting kind of architecture about the plant. And we, when we talk to developers and applicants, we indicate that that is something that the city is looking for overall. When it comes to the administration, really, what Chris and I look at is the, is the diversity for the most part. But it is, that is something that council and our natural resources staff would like to see.
I can understand the diversity of plant material used. But before I ask my next question, just a point of clarification, single-family house, this doesn't go for single-family house or duplex?
No, these are, these apply, like I say, when landscape plans are required for a project. So that would be the, usually, the commercial, industrial, or multifamily-type projects that you see.
I actually feel a statement there. "And the complement of plants used shall provide year-round visual interest." I mean, a homeowner or a developer or somebody reading that would have more questions than answers. What does it mean?
What can I ask?
You're telling me, you're telling me that if some, a multifamily building, and you have to provide a plan, a landscape plan, then I will have to identify, if I am the applicant, I will have to identify the plant materials being used. Okay, I will have 25% roses, and the next 75% will be comprised of XYZ. Personally, I think that's...
Usually, that involves, you know, evergreen-type trees and plants and not. There's usually a complement. We've not ever had an issue with this.
I wish we could state it in a different, stated differently, that is more, provide more direction to, to an applicant. And I'm also thinking right now that the city is telling me what kind of flowers or what kind of covering I should be putting there. I mean, each one of us has things that we like and we don't like. I might want to put some junipers, of course, and other things. I love dahlias. I plant dahlias every year. I love roses. I have roses every year. Now, I mean, other people like other things, and some of the things that other people like and may want to put there might not meet the requirement of the city council.
That's true. This is not something that staff recommended. This was something the city council wanted to see. And all I can tell you is, in the 10 years that Chris and I have been working with it, we haven't had any issues, you know. We try to work with the applicants.
Now that we bring it up, I know we haven't had issues. You know, I want to send to the city council something that is customer-friendly to applicants. And I have my biases as to what I would like to see, and you're telling me if I put 25% roses and 26% dahlias, that's not, that's not allowed work.
That's correct. That's...
That's okay. I guess, could I clarify a point to Commissioner Singh's point? This, from a homeowner's standpoint, we wouldn't require a landscaping plan, so typically, this is going to be focused around a larger commercial development...
Right.
...where you're simply using your best... Where you're simply using your best judgment to, in some cases, try to diversify more something that may lose its leaves in the winter, but then the stems are a red color that may or may not, correct? If I'm understanding...
And there's always, you know, there's always a mix of, let's say, evergreen plants and trees. We just haven't had an issue with it.
Okay. Commissioner Benke, you have a question?
Well, no, I think, just to sort of carry that along, I think a little bit of what you were just talking about, you know, red twig dogwoods, evergreens, you have some year-round, you have winter interest. I think also the kind of, I mean, this is not, this is really not subject to revision right now. I mean, it's not part of what we're talking about. However, it is something that might need a little bit of clarification. But quite honestly, working in the business, anybody who is creating the kind of project that we're directing this to is typically going to hire a landscape architect, and this will have perfect meaning for somebody in that field.
Yes.
Now, I do realize that from a layman's standpoint, it is a little broad.
Yeah, I was thinking about as a layman.
Yeah.
Put myself as a developer of a six-unit building, for example, you know. So that's okay.
Commissioner Singh, any other comments?
Nope.
No. Commissioner Levy, you have the floor.
I have the same issue. Things get buried in the winter. How do they maintain the visual interest if they are buried? That, that whole thing bothers me. You've got a development that puts in evergreens, not tall ones, but globe, I think, the, globe kind of, very nice to see during the summer. In the winter, they're buried. Now they're in violation, essentially.
No, we don't.
No.
We don't, no.
Because what's left above the, above the snow, evergreens, deciduous, and, you know, as Deb pointed out, a lot of the trees, when you plant a tree out in a new development like this, tends to sit by itself or it's in a small group. It's not, you know, in a woodland where everything's all crunched together, and if you took a tree out, the tree is open on one side because there's no branches there. The trees tend to form in more of a specimen shape. So you're seeing the structure, I mean, you use architecture, it's really the structure of the tree and the branching of the deciduous trees that has character. And then the evergreens, you know, I mean, here, you know, you might have three or four different kinds of evergreens, you know, pine and spruce, you know, fir, they all have different characters to them. And that leaf structure, the deciduous leaf structure looks different and gives the character also during the winter. But you're right, anything buried, they're all buried. You know? And this is Minnesota.
The gist of the conversation is they're trying to get to some visual change in the winter, you know, depending what they're planting, some diversification, something that would drive to having not just everything lose its leaves and...
Sure.
And mostly, you know, this is going to, this is going to focus on our commercial areas, this is going to be off of 42, this is going to be the development with Chick-fil-A, this is going to be the plantings around Costco. If you look at that, there's a fair amount of stuff that still gives you some visual interest on those plantings in the winter, regardless of snow.
Grab apples, hang on to berries for a while, until the birds get them. You know, there's color there. I mean, this is...
Some of the oak trees hold their leaves.
Absolutely. They hold their leaves all winter, and there's color there, you know. And that has been something that I've worked with for years, and it is, it is a challenge sometimes to find things. The 25% diversity issue here is, you know, I think the whole issue of the monoculture, I think, is the problem. You know, the Elms, we lost in Minneapolis, the ashes we're losing now, you know, the oaks from the oak wilt. I mean, anytime you get a monoculture going, I think you're subjecting yourself to that problem. So, you know, this, I think it's the right direction personally.
Commissioners, any other questions? We need to hold a public hearing.
That's right.
At this point, I will open the public hearing and ask for anyone in the audience to step up and give us their thoughts on any of the changes to the Burnsville ordinance. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, any additional comments?
Just want to say, Mr. Chair, commissioners, commend Ms. Garros and staff for doing a wonderful job. I think the bottom line is, changes have to be made, sometimes because of state requirements and county requirements, and city council make changes, and so we have to do housekeeping tasks. And they have done a very good job in detailing what was there and what is being recommended. I think they, want to commend them for doing a fine job.
I concur. Concur, definitely.
And I would also like to thank you for your time. For those of us that have been on the planning commission for a while, despite the changes for building codes, in many cases, you've addressed things that we have had issues with. I think all of us that have been here for a while can put an occasion's name with each one of these. So I do appreciate you kind of, as we go along every year, creating that list and addressing these things. And so we, we are ahead of the game. So with that being said, commissioners, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of the proposed ordinance amendments as presented by staff.
We have a, Ms. Garros, you have a comment?
I just wanted to, if you wanted to note adding information about the second lift or any, any particular kinds of provisions, if you'd want to include that in the motion.
I, I think, well, actually, we have a motion here. Why don't we see if we can give a second and then open it for discussion?
Yeah. Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Benke. Commissioner Benke, before we take a vote, you have a comment.
That specific element is only for single-family in R1, R1A, and R2? Or is that general through the whole thing?
This 10-726 is, this applies generally to everything.
Okay, but this is for the security?
Yes. I thought you wanted to include...
Well, yeah, but the security should cover, the security, the surety should release as the project is finished, and the final lift is part of finishing. So no, I don't think we need to change this.
Okay.
Okay, wasn't there another part, though, that addressed the CO and the TCO?
Yes. And that is related to the single-family.
Okay. Required landscape, but this is all landscaping and other site work? This is all landscaping, required landscaping again, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't have an issue here as far as the lifts of asphalt?
I just wanted to, if you wanted to include that, we can...
Nope. I don't see it as applying.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we have a motion that's been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. Commissioners, are there any updates this evening?
None.
None from commissioners? I would like to take a moment and invite everybody to the community celebration we call the Fire Muster. I believe there will not be helicopter rides, to the best of my knowledge, but I would like to make sure, we now, now they can. That may come up at the next board meeting. So I would like to invite everybody to the Fire Muster. I think it's going to be an amazing event this year, as always in the past, and I just, I think everybody should attend.
The dates are?
The, it's Friday, September 12th. It starts on Wednesday with the block party, and we have events Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and then there is a church service Sunday morning, as we'll be cleaning up. So those of you that would like to come and help clean up, we would take volunteers. Thank you very much. With that, I would stand for a motion for adjournment. Moved by Commissioner Levy.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Workman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and the motion carries. Thank you very much for watching this evening, and have a good evening.